I call this meeting back to order. Okay. Next, we are moving down to superintendent's report. And I believe the first thing on that is student and staff recognition. But we have some students coming tonight to be recognized in person. And so we're going to skip on down on that and come back to it when they get here. Next on the list, Mr. Morales, we have trustee training hours.
Do y'all have those papers right next to you?
Yes, sir.
To look at that, and I don't know how Monty wants to do this, but I know by law, we have to put in who has a which hours, which they don't. And then, I mean, every time before an election, that has to be done. And then, Mary Bell, that's reported.
I'll post it in the minutes. In that first, the first sheet, the memorandum, it does cover who's complete, who's deficient, and who's exceeded.
Okay. All righty.
And I would recommend to Pete Noon and then whoever, whether it's Chris or Gus, on the new or both of them, because I shouldn't assume. May the 12th, is it?
I think the Friday.
May 12th.
Wednesday, May the 12th. If in any way you can clear your calendar and make it to Canyon for that class. The very first one that they offered for new board members is very, very beneficial. They'll cover, you know, the standard stuff that you would think about, closed session stuff and board member responsibilities. But also, they spend some time touching on whether, whatever the legislature's doing and different things that happen from a school district versus other boards that we may or may not have been on in our time. It was, I know when Joe Keith and I went through it, a decade ago, it was very, very beneficial to get us started off on the right foot. So if you can clear your calendar, it should be very, very good.
And it's worth five hours. You can pick up five hours in that one, one day.
Can you make it 10?
I would love it.
You're pretty close with that, sir.
You know, and it hasn't been a usual year. Normally, it's much easier to get your hours. Tasby has training sessions where you can go down and get them in one day. And so many of those were canceled this year. So you pretty much had to take the initiative to go online and get your hours yourself. So anyway, all righty, but that's out there available for anyone to look at. Onto the mission statement.
Darren, we didn't bring that with us, did we? Our vision? No, I got German in my head. Question on it.
He should.
I believe it's the vision statement that we can get.
No, it's, it's actually written in the word for word in the minutes. If I pull up, if I pull up the minutes.
Because I did want to make one recommendation to you. I love it. It said every child in there, I believe. And I want to put everyone in there because I think our teachers, our adults, all of us need always be engaged.
Makes sense.
So it's another E.
So every child and every student are replacing.
Seven.
Every, every person or everyone.
Every person in the district should always continue to be educated, engaged.
What's the mission statement you want to work on?
Right.
We completed the vision statement. And it's transformed to engage, educate, empower everyone every day.
I like that. I like that.
Yeah, that could be awesome.
I'll love it. That's good. And feedback that I got from the teachers so far, because we did send it out district-wide, they liked it. I didn't have anybody that didn't like it. So what our next deal is, we need to come up with a mission statement now and core values. So we probably need to have another meeting sometime and knock that out. Because what I'd really like to do is get that to all our teachers before the end of this year so that once we feel comfortable with whatever that is, we can start making signs and put up in every building and every place so people start seeing it.
Every time.
Every time they walk in the building. So y'all have a time if you want to do that? Would y'all rather go a Tuesday, Thursday? Or would you rather do another one still and see if we can lock that out online?
Lunch seemed to work good last time.
Y'all want to do a lunch? That's easier on all y'all's schedules.
That's fine as long as that's the only thing we have on the deal.
Yeah, you're right.
We focus only on the mission.
Okay, and I think that's what we're going to have to do. But guys, you need to know this too. We're into the hiring and all that stuff now.
Minor stuff, I understand.
Yeah, we may have to throw some names and say, hey, guys, we need to hire this person before they go somewhere else.
I'm talking about my tradition.
Because we're starting to interview.
Yeah, that part's two minutes of a meeting.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so I'm good. So I'll pick some time real quick, send it all out to you and say, hey, can y'all make this lunch?
Sure.
Does that work?
Sounds good.
All right, good deal.
Okay, mission statement. And do we want to go on to, to Mr. Blackburn for refunding refinancing PGH project?
Yes, this, yeah, let's do that.
Okay.
The next one, guys, if you look through your papers again, you're going to see this governmental financial advisory agreement. I don't know how many of y'all remember John? Okay, John was the guy who was the advisor that helped us through the bond with the junior high. You know, if they would give them junior high. At that time, he was working with Government Capital. That was his employer at that time. Since then, he has started his own company. It's Lono Ligo. Ligo. And basically, he comes to visit with Doug and I the other day and told us possibilities of maybe saving the district some money or years on possible, is it refinancing stuff?
Yeah, the 2012 series is the highest rated, the tax interest rate that we have. We have, we refunded one previously, and he was involved in that.
I remember when we did that.
The 2012 series can be called August of '22. And he said, there's some options you could do. It's getting, where the difference between a refunding and a call is, you know, refunding is where you sell bonds and you place money in an escrow account and they make payments out of it. And they match them up to where you did sort of defuse the bond, they call it. But a call was where you called them off completely and you could refinance it at a lower rate. Or you could, at that point in time, there's a lot of options where you could have a bond issued. Say you had called an election in May of '22. You could, you could ref, as part of that election, you could refinance that old debt, extend it a little bit, lower the rate. And the effect on the new debt is minimal, maybe one or possibly maybe two cents, depending on the numbers. But you could, you could add another, you know, $4 million or whatever to that refi, refiling the old one with little impact on the tax rate, which is a good way to do it. To sell the bond issue, you say, well, it'll only cost us a few cents. Or maybe theoretically, it could be a less than a cent, whatever the number would go to. And that was one, one thing we talked about too. I know we have a lot of needs, the high schools especially, on, you know, getting that up to date, security and remodeling and get that campus going. So that was something we talked about. If you decide not to do a bond issue, you can just do a, an issue to refund, I mean, recall those, those bonds without an election, you know, and save interest rates. Cut the interest rate and, you know, save tax money, basically.
And would it cut years off the bond?
Could, could. It depended on how you structured it, you know. You could, you could, you could do anything you wanted to. You could extend it out and, and cut the payments down, which would lower the, and then the rates are lower too. You could do a combination of, you know, lots of different things.
Okay, well, that's why he's coming.
I understand we can refinance at a lower rate and save money that way. I understand that we can, by getting a lower rate, go less years and save money on the back end.
Yeah, you could cut off two or three or four years out of the out years.
Right.
You know, something like that even. That's an option.
But are you saying we could actually pull cash out? Kind of like a pulling equity out of a, or is that to do some other projects?
That would entail a bond election.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought, I was misunderstanding what you were saying.
It would be done in conjunction with an election.
With an election.
And with the selling point being that the impact to the taxpayers would be minimal. Minimal to pull this money out.
I got you. And still take a bond election, but it would be little impact.
Yeah. Besides 2012, what's, is he, how much of the indebtedness of the, of the district is he talking about here?
I think just the optimal is a 2012 series. That the, the first series is the, is QSCB subsidy. So we wouldn't want to touch that because we get subsidies from the feds on that deal. And then we've already refunded, the, there's three altogether. We've already refunded the third one. So it seems to be, and he'll go over all those numbers. And he just wants an introduction to be able to. This form that he had sort of puts us at record that he is our representative. But it, it doesn't commit us to anything at all. It can be, it can be terminated within a month's notice or whatever. You know, it's, there's no commitment at all. It's just put him on notice that he's, he is the financial representative of record, basically. And, and he is with, he is with a different firm. He's a part of this firm. And I think he's the complete owner of it.
No.
He's a part of it. But he was the one that had worked with us over the years on the junior high bond initially and then the refunding of it of the series two.
Is he asking to replace somebody here?
Well, we've been working with, yeah, it's a different firm. It's a different firm. Different financial.
So he's chasing the business, okay.
Yeah.
He was with them. So he started his own, now he's chasing. It's all kind of a relationship we had with Government Capital.
He is involved in that firm with some other owners, but he is not the sole owner. I mean, he's, he's just involved in it. He's, he's a good guy. I get along with him fine. And he's, I think he's done us a good job.
He made us a lot of money over the years.
Well, he did. So he just wants an opportunity to, to present.
Two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars.
Give feedback from the board on what their ideas are.
Two eighty eight.
Basically, that's all.
Two eighty eight. So we saved an interest cost.
Yeah.
Because I got nailed to the wall on a couple times on that deal. It was, remember, we bounced our INS like a nickel for one year?
Mm-hmm.
And ended up saving $288,000 on, on the deal. And we went back to normal, just like we told the voters we were going to do.
Right.
But it was a year of some probing questions.
That was my first year on the board when we.
And look at this comp, this proposal. There's, there's no fees unless we go ahead and move forward.
Right. Yeah, there's no cost at all unless, unless he is our representative.
And that's, and that's.
That would take lots of other commitments from him.
Sounds, okay.
There is, there is a, well, a sort of a balloon payment in that 2012, too, to be eliminated too, which is something that I've been trying to say, put me back in the fund balance in there to take care of that. Look on our advertisements calendar, you'll see that. It hits in about four or five years or so. But everyone knows that the interest markets and the interest rates are a lot lower than they have been. And maybe, maybe they're at the lowest they'll ever be. Who knows? You know, it's just. And he, we were just sort of talking about all different things. And he said they have, they had even sold some taxable bonds because the spread between non-taxable and taxable is such a small, small difference. It's just sort of crazy the way the interest rates are. But, you know, that would not be, we were just talking about. This is sort of amazing for me to.
I think the, the idea of lowering your payment or taking years off the back, either one, I mean, I think we've got to do something while we have this opportunity. Interest rates are so low.
Considering what John's done for us in the past and how he's worked with this situation, I'm not opposed to that idea. I'm, I'm, I would recommend.
Yeah, we listen to.
Looking at, is he looking to come next month?
He's looking to come next month.
I listen, but at least we at least listen.
Yeah, that's all, that's all he wants.
That's all he wants to give.
Just an opportunity to talk to y'all.
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to campus reports. We'll go in order. I hope everybody's got theirs in the book here. Starting out at Perryton High School. Do we have anything to add to the report?
Mr. Sprowl, have you go? I think we have a question.
Yes.
Sure. I don't mind at all. I'll take a second to introduce myself. My name is Adam Jones. I am one of the science teachers over there at the high school. And I'm also in a master's program, getting my master's degree in educational administration. So I'm filling in tonight for Mr. Sprowl and Mrs. Sloan. Just to give you a real quick report on the high school business. We got wrapped up with the English side of the EOC testing. Our side went well. The state had a few issues with the online testing. I'm sure you guys read about it. But we handled our side very, very well. Everything's going good. We're trying to wrap up the end of the year. We're busy, busy, busy. We've got kids at regional track meet this week. We've got kids at golf. And I don't know if the basketball team is here yet or not, but we get a chance to celebrate them here in just a little bit. But thank you for your time. That's what's going on with high school.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay. Ludipenia Martin, Ms. Wilson, I think that's our author.
All there. The only thing to add is graduation. We're looking at about 20 to 22 kids.
Fantastic.
Good.
All righty. Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
And when is that graduation?
The 22nd at 2:00 PM after the Perryton High School graduation.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Perryton Junior High, is Mr. Garcia here?
He is not here. He has nothing to add, he told me.
Nothing to add, all right. Let's see, Williams?
I have it on good authority that it's all good at Williams.
All right. Somehow I knew it was. Wright, it's Miss Speitz. Okay. All right, Perryton Kinder, Mr. Felix?
Not here, told me nothing to add.
Maintenance report. I know I saw Mr. Kemp out there.
Yeah, he's out there.
Mr. Kemp, do you have anything to add to your report? All right. Athletics report. I have not seen Coach Abrether.
Yeah, he's gone off to regional golf and track.
Okay.
He's in love with tonight. So I don't think there's anything to add.
Communications and safeties. Mr. Clark here tonight?
I'm here.
All right. Do you have anything to add to your report, Mr. Clark?
Not unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Clark? And technology, Mr. Throgg Morton?
Nothing there. I thought it was something.
This was the quickest round, you're done. Quickest round of reports we've ever had. No, actually, go ahead.
Something this morning that was just interesting, but I can't remember what it was.
I got a question.
Oh.
We mentioned here about our Chromebooks and the lack of repair.
What?
Our Chromebooks and how COVID caught up and everything. And then we mentioned in here about some schools are going with the program to teach students to repair Chromebooks. Are we going to pursue that?
I think so. I, we, especially ones who are in high school. But like they will come train junior high kids to it. It's, I would think it would take more sifting to find computers reliable.
Well, I realize that. I just, I consider it open into a CTE type situation where there's certified computer repair people, which is a real need.
And they're starting in the seventh grade.
And I really think it's something we need to pursue.
Yeah, we talked about that. And we talked to Eric North, who's the guy who's probably going to be teaching the class.
Okay.
And I'm trying to get him to where he can actually teach the kids how to go to business.
I think it'd be a win-win for both of us. Give them time to work on big problems.
Start them in seventh grade and you get more years of free labor out of them.
That's fair. They would walk into the high school pretty well trained too.
Absolutely. Yeah.
That would be cool.
I've had a situation like you in Penn on one time. We had the, a class that took care of the school website. But the first six weeks, when there's annual things you've got to stick on, like the kids didn't know how to do it. And so it was, it wasn't, it wasn't anything near like, it was more programming unless Gabbard is more copy and paste stuff in. I mean, it's very simple, but this was Adobe Go Live, I think. The teacher had to get two weeks of training to teach the class from Adobe. But anyway, that did not work well, having the kids do it. But this would be something really good because especially like on day one, you're not going to be, have a pile of them to be fixed.
Right.
And so there will be time to, to train them before they're going to start doing it.
It really sounds like a win-win. Good for the kids, good for the school.
Very much.
That was my question.
And at the same time, I want to read that. That's kind of cool.
Any other questions for Mr. Throgg Morton? Okay, and then Ms. Walker, is she out there?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, so. And then Ranger Roundup. Anything to report on Ranger Roundup?
Dr. Rock?
No other updates.
No other updates. Sounds good.
If you have it, make sure you look through the survey. It's interactive.
Okay. And now we have curriculum and instructions reports. Dr. Rock?
I do not have anything else to add unless you have any questions on the report. And then I would like to go into the attachments.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Rock?
How do, how do we do our language assessments? Is it just a straight test? Over here on, starting our pre-K general updates, we talk in the second paragraph. And so there were nine students that still needed to be assessed on language assessments to determine how to build in program placement. How do we do that?
Yes, so we start testing with the Spanish. We test two languages, the Spanish and the English.
Correct.
So we test the Spanish and then we move into the assessment of the English to determine what levels they're at in both languages. Great question.
And by the way, we did have a good turnout.
We did. We had 47 families come through. I think I even gave that on there. Yes, and we're already at 21 that have been recommended for the dual language program. So it looks like we'd be, we need to be hiring a new teacher. We do have another enrollment date, November, I'm sorry, November. May the 4th. May the 4th. And it's going to be an evening one to helping any of the families that were not able to attend during the school day so they could come after work.
And I need to brag on Dr. Rock because we did do it a little bit different this year. And I think that's a reason for the larger turnout. And we're still trying to improve that. We're making it kind of an express line. You know what I'm saying? Because parents get aggravated when they have to sit there and wait two or three hours or you're waiting for an interpreter or whatever. We need to make it friendly, customer friendly. Okay?
Okay, so I'll move into the 2021, 22 allotment and TEAC certification form. We do need the board approval to move on and submit this to TEA. And this is stating that we do adopt the TEAC's resource system for our adopted curriculum. So all schools would be required to use the TEAC's resource system as our curriculum in Perryton ISD. In addition to that, you will also see under one, two, three, and four, all of our content core areas, the adoption material that each of the content areas have adopted for each of the levels. So you'll see grades K-5, the middle school, 6, 8, and then the high school, 9, 12. So these were adopted by the teachers, those content areas in, in our district. On that second page, page 29, it asks what the district's approach is to covering 100% of the standards. And we will be, we would like to submit that we adopt TEAC's resource system and align purchase materials to the, TRS is the TEAC's resource system, scope and sequence, which is our GAG. And then our year to glance and three, adopt TEAC's resource system and align locally developed materials to the scope and sequence once again. And that would be the same for all of the content areas for math, reading, language arts, science, and social studies. So all the materials must align to the TEAC's resource system.
Does this represent a change? Excuse me.
I am not sure what was approved last year. This is something that should be approved on a yearly basis, if not a biennium, because that's how we receive our allotment for our resources, our textbooks, through the state of Texas. And we are in the next biennium as far as getting the new allotment coming next year. So it, we have to make it last for those two years. We currently have in adoption the pre-K textbooks. And I believe that what we're going to submit is going to be the SAVAS, the three chairs for pre-K. And it will be a new curriculum that our pre-kers will be using, our teachers will be using next year. So that the, the funding for those resources would come through this allotment. Okay? Any questions? On that second question on 29, what implementation approach does your district take with instructional materials listed above? On this, we would like to indicate other because we do use a combined approach of all school leaders being required to implement district approach number one. And then two, school leaders, school leaders have flexibility to select different materials that are research based. So we want to make sure that the materials that are being selected to supplement the curriculum are research based. And that's for all content areas. On the appendix A, this covers the math for each of the different levels, what we're using to implement the TEAC's resource system. And you'll see that it's highlighted on there as well. We do use locally developed materials as well. So for example, in math, we have identified some of the resources that are in the textbook adoption don't completely cover the TEAC's that are needing to be taught, the expectations. So then we have to develop and find resources that supplement to ensure that the students are being taught 100% of the, the expectations for the different grade levels. So it just repeats a little bit of the adopted materials for each of the levels. So appendix A covers math. Appendix B covers the reading language arts instructional materials. And on that, you will see that we have already purchased the first grade dual language resources for the language arts to get ready for that. So we have already received that and used the allotment funds to purchase the resources. On appendix C, it covers the instructional materials for science for all the different levels, elementary, junior high, and high school. And appendix D covers the social studies instructional materials. So this will be a discussion and possible action when we get to those action items up the line.
Okay. Okay.
Any questions?
John, are developed materials that, or the books don't cover all the TEAC's? Do our principals and teachers do that together? Or how do we assess whether textbooks are deficient?
So the, the instructional coaches have been very integral in that part because a lot of times, sometimes the teachers don't have the time to realize that there's some gaps. So the coaches have been very helpful in identifying those areas and developing the materials that the teachers need to present within that classroom. Great question.
And I do need to brag on that. I shouldn't do this one. Alan was here bragging. The coach's office is, is going to be ready Monday. Of course, they can move in from out of the front and move into their own little workspace. Okay. She pictures that later on. All right. Any other questions for Dr. Rock?
Okay, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I move into the self-assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
So the self-assessment is one that I have been mentioning in the board report since, I believe, January. We did do our, our training in January and had our committee formed at that time so that they could participate in the training. We had two additional meetings. And then the, the report, the, the report was sent to them for their review their review and any additional revisions. Friday was our last day to submit any revisions or comments. So we made a few revisions before we presented it for your review. So there are seven sections that we reviewed in this self-assessment for special education. And if you'll turn to 41, I do apologize for the small print. When I submitted it, I didn't realize it was going to print so small, so I do apologize for that.
You didn't want us to see it, though.
I did want you to see it, and I know that the ratings are in a larger print. So for child find, the program would automatically give us a level. So it did rate us, or a rating, it did rate us at proficient. And if you look at the performance categories in the middle, we did add, the implementation was at exemplary, the professional development was at developed. So we know we have to do some work in that area. And then the communication was at proficient. The next area that we were supposed to self-assess was on page 43, which is IEP content and development. And the program gave us a rating of proficient after indicating exemplary on implementation, developed on professional development. And that was the conclusions on that. So working on that professional development there. The next one is IEP implementation on page 44. It did give us a rating of proficient with performance categories at proficient in implementation, developed in professional development, and proficient in communication. So we have, we will be working on a professional development plan to improve that area. The next one is on page 45, the top one, properly constituted art committees. And the system gave us a overall rating of proficient with the categories of implementation at exemplary and professional development at proficient. And then the following one is instructional strategies. This one does have a rating of developing. We have some work to do in this area for our special education programs. We were at developed for implementation. The data showed us at proficient, and the professional development was at development. On the next page, we have, on 46, we have secondary transition. The program rated us at proficient with implementation at exemplary, data at exemplary, and professional development at proficient. And those, oh, I have one more, I'm sorry. Forty-nine, that we needed also to do a self-assessment on family engagement. And the system rated us at proficient. We had developed at implementation. And that was a lot because of COVID this year. We weren't able to do a lot of family gatherings for the family engagement. The data was at developed, professional development was at developed, and communication was at exemplary. So that is a self-assessment that we will be submitting to TEA, but I wanted to present it to the board before we hit the submit button. And we are ahead of schedule. It's not due until June, so I'm so happy that the committee has helped us complete this in a timely manner.
All right.
And as I can tell you, I mean, that's just one of those paperwork that is time-consuming. But we went through two, three meetings with all our special education meeting.
We went through three meetings and then a collaboration.
And the rest of the districts, we had a meeting, and then with our SSA, and the rest of the districts are trying to figure out how to do this now. And Dr. Rock has done a good job in this area.
Would they be willing to front a consulting?
There we go, consulting. That's kind of, I didn't say that, but that's what I was thinking.
I'm not shy.
Yeah. But anyways, we've done a good job on this and where it is given, which is really good.
Yes. And then last, I hope you took the time to read the information about GT. That is one of our district improvement, district improvement plan goals, is to screen all of our second graders. So just great news that we heard from Ms. Gags, our GT coordinator.
All right. Any other questions for Dr. Rock? Thank you, Dr. Rock.
Thank you for the GT stuff. This will help solve a couple of arguments I've been having.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to the CFO's report. It's your turn, Doug.
Can I get away with nothing to add?
Yes, you may. Motion carries.
Enrollment report.
Yeah, there we go. Fifty-two is our disbursements report for pending checks. Page, let's see, this page, fifty-five is the district checks for the month of April to date. This was around April 15. And then on page, page sixty-six starts the complete disbursements list for the month of March. Our financial report starts on page, let's see here, page ninety-three. Cash position report there in total, all those accounts here on page ninety-four. Checking accounts, five seventy-three to fifteen. General operating funds, reconciled values of three twenty, three forty-seven, ninety-four, and CDs of ten million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. The schedule of those CDs is attached on page ninety-six. Interest and sinking funds of nine sixty-seven, two eighty, two eighty-three, include CDs of nine sixty-seven, two eighty-two. Cafeteria funds of thirty-three, six seventy-one, ninety-four. Special education funds of three thirty-five, four seventy-four, sixteen, include CDs of one hundred and fifty thousand. Activity accounts of three thirty-five, nine ninety-two, sixty CDs, and reconciled balance of twenty-six, eight eighty-two, ninety-one. Page one oh three. CDs on page one oh four is the total of those. Ranger Roundup of six thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight. Capital projects funds of one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four eighty-two, fourteen, which we reinvested, added our forty thousand additional amount to that fund, and then reinvested that CD. It's now one hundred and twenty-one thousand, four eighty-two, fourteen. Okay, the financial statements format on page one oh eight. Revenues, fourteen million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand. Expenditures of thirteen million, three oh two, seven fifty-four. That day going across, you can see our capital outlay numbers of one sixteen, oh forty-six. And the total of those is there on page one oh nine there. General fund revenues in our financial statement format, the N7, fourteen million, seven fifteen. Our pre-estimated revenue for our budget is, again, twenty-two million, one twenty-seven, six ninety-three. Expenditures, thirteen million, three oh two, seven seventy-three. And our budget is twenty-two million, two forty-seven, six ninety-three. That number does include the budget amendment for the bus that we purchased. Had to post that to be able to do a purchase order for the bus, which, as you know, we received the bus yesterday, so.
We got a picture up here.
And there is a picture of a brand-new international bus.
Seat belts.
Yeah, seat belts all the way through it.
Old bus driver saying.
They delivered it to us, no charge, so.
It's even better. I was going to ask how we got it.
And Bluebird used to want to check before they would walk away, but they said, no problem, we'll just invoice you, so.
Trusting.
As I was visiting with our mechanic out there, and he really liked the bus, he thought it was a good bus, and he really likes the idea of gas, especially for impound rounds, because you're not ever having to fix any of the depth issues.
Mm-hmm. You're never going to get warm enough to blow out the cops and let's take it out in the road.
And that's what he says he ends up having to do with all our buses.
Just driving randomly.
Every now and then, he's randomly got to drive them down the road.
I've got to do that with my pickup. All of a sudden, they'll tell me to drive safely at highway speeds. So go drive 20 miles to save the environment.
I mean, he even advised me that, you know, maybe if we replace these drought buses that are decent now that go out of town, to go with gas, too. He said, I think that would save you money, too. Anyway, as we buy them, we need to.
So look at them.
Bond said, oh, get the fuel mixed up in their fuel.
Yeah.
Food service financial statement on page one fourteen. Revenues of five twenty-four, two ninety-five. Expenditures of six ninety-four, four forty, forty-eight. And same numbers on the financial statements. Sort of keep in mind, too, on those, the revenues are sort of on a cash basis, so the revenue that, for the meal served, the costs in the prior month don't come until the next month, so there's a little bit of a, there's a little bit of timing gap, which I'll just keep that in mind. Debt service fund, revenues of one million, one ten, seven twenty-two. Expenditures of three fourteen, three forty-two. And then Ranger. Get a name for this. Looks like we got a page out of order, at least, because part of the financials on the, on Ranger Roundup are there on page one twenty. The revenues of one seventy-four, two seventy-four. Expenditures of two eighty-eight, one twenty. And then the detail of those on page one twenty-two is the revenue expenditures. And I've given you the detail of the expenditures on page one twenty-four, one twenty-five. Last but not least is our enrollment report. That's on page one twenty-eight. Our enrollment has of two thousand and seventy-three students, I guess, per April. Down from a year ago of twenty-one ninety compared to opening day of twenty-one oh five.
Okay. All right. We are now down to consent agenda items. And I'm thinking there must have been some miscommunication on the student-staff recognition, so.
Doesn't matter either, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so we'll just go ahead and recognize our students on student-staff recognition. So I'll go ahead and read those out. PJH Robotics Team. Team project leaders, Billy Counts, Elijah Garcia, and Case Temple. Team programmers, Sam DeSantiago, Gus Ilor, Emmanuel Soto. Core value team leaders, Nathan Miller, Kayden Rodriguez. Team members, Michael Armstrong and Trenton Estes. These kids were all part of a gold medal champions at Southwest Regional First Local League competition. Up next, we have PGH Math. Get More Math Program earned 20,000 points. Average for other students was 1,000 to 3,000, and all these kids earned 20,000 or more points. So at the mastery level, actually, there was only one. I was looking at other. Denise Rodriguez, over 20,000 points, fantastic. And then on to PHS Theater. Bi-district one-act play contest. All-star cast, Jacob Schollenbarger. Honorable mention, Marsha, or, is that Mara? Or is it Marsha? Phelps, Mara Phelps. And then best technical, Karen Sanchez. PHS UIL academics qualified for regionals. First place in computer science, Jaden Rodriguez. Second place in spelling, Caitlin Thomas. Placed at district. Fifth place in social studies, Marshall Attaway. Sixth place in literary criticism, Molly McGoy. PHS Track Regional Qualifiers in Track and Field. Area triple jump, Pablo Perez. Area champ, hundred-meter hurdles, hurdles, Alyssa Rutz. Povalt, Shep Miller. Jeanette Montoya. High jump, Kate Gilbert. Eight-hundred-meter run, George Palmer. Three-hundred-meter hurdles, Alyssa Rutz. Two-hundred-meter run, Kyler Fager. Men's four-by-two-hundred relay, Louis Assad, Kyler Fager, Shep Miller, Tad Shigota. Men's four-by-four-hundred relay, Julian Servantes, Eric Garcia, George Palmer, Jacob Schollenbarger. PHS Boys Basketball, had several McDowell District team. We have the co-offensive player of, Player of the Year, Levi Stevens. The Defensive Player of the Year for the district, Pablo Perez. Newcomer of the Year, Julian Servantes. All District, Daxton Rigdon. Honorable mention, Kyler Fager and Tad Shigota. Academic All District, Louis Assad, Gavin Lacston, Levi Stevens, Pablo Perez, Julian Servantes, and Daxton Rigdon. One more on the Academic All District, Tad Shigota. PHS Girls Basketball. Academic All District. Haley Farnie, Erin Merkel, Mackenzie Stokes, Tanya Navarate, Samantha Ramirez, Giselle Hernandez, Johanna Perez, Paulo Uribe, Morgan Vela, Hallie Lingo, and Molly McGoy. Co-newcomer of the Year, Erin Merkel. Honorable mention, All District, Tanya Navarate and Tori Rivera. TABC and TGCA Academic All State, Johanna Perez and Morgan Vela. And then All District, Johanna Perez and Morgan Vela. Lots of students really recognizing us well, I mean, representing us well, so shout out to all those. Okay. Moving on to consent agenda items. Minutes of the prior meeting. You've all had an opportunity to look over the minutes. Do I have a recommendation to approve those?
So move. Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the prior meetings. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Budget amendments. Do we just have one, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Get on the right page here.
Page one thirty-five.
On page thirty-five?
One thirty-five.
One thirty-five, okay. Okay. We're looking at General Operating Fund, number one ninety-nine, budget amendment number two. This is to make an allowance for the school bud we, the school bus we purchased and looking to amend the budget by $90,000.
So move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve budget amendment number two as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Moving on to discussion or action items, we've already covered fuel bids. Moving on to discussion or action items, we've already covered fuel bids. Next, we have discussion and possible action on term, probationary, and part-time contracts. Mr. Morelles, do you have recommendations?
Yeah, I recommend that we renew these contracts for twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Miguel Estobar High School, Martinez Junior High, Taylor Martin, Bergen DeShed, Wright, Lindsay Fletcher, Shannon Suter, Maribel Toriso. At the S S A, Madison Klink, and a term contract for Julie Herrera, I believe that's at the S S A also, and then a part-time contract for Dylan Townard for the junior high.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve all probationary contracts for teachers as presented by Mr. Morelles.
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, up next, we have recommendations on new personnel contracts for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school years, not for this school year.
Everybody was given a sheet, because there was a change to it, so it's not gonna be in your book, it's gonna be just on your.
Uh-oh.
Yep.
There's an additional name. Okay. I have four recommendations. Grady Arnold, P G H Math. Vanessa Bresno, P H S School Nurse. P G H Counselor, Brooke Hill. Wright Elementary Teacher, Alyssa Laura. And S S A Angela Howe. Do you recommend all these teachers for?
The S S A Angela Howe is replacing Mary Nine, the S S A Superintendent. That is a recommendation to the school where they're finding physical agent for the S S A.
Okay.
And so that, that was a recommendation there. I believe there's recommendations.
That's a separate action item.
Yeah, it's a separate action item, that's actually the diagnostic.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I recommend me.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and take care of the S S A first. This time, I'd entertain a motion to approve Angela Hollowell as the S S A Educational Diagnostic Probationary Contract. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Ms. Angela Hollowell for a probationary contract. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve Grady Arnold, P G H Math Teacher Coach, dual probationary contract.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve Mr. Arnold for a dual probationary contract. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve Vanessa Brissano, School Nurse, Probationary Contract at P H S.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve Vanessa Brissano, School Nurse, as a probationary contract. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Brooke Hill as P G H Counselor to a term contract.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve Brooke Hill as Counselor at term contract at P G H. All in, oh, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six one. All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve Ms. Alyssa Laura as an elementary teacher at Wright to a probationary contract.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve Ms. Alyssa Laura to, as an elementary teacher, probationary contract at Wright. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Some new personnel. Got the S S A. Okay, next, we have just.
No, we need to do.
Still need to do.
That's indirect.
Excuse me? Oh!
Yes.
I thought the added one was at the bottom of that list. Okay. Okay. Okay, we've got, okay, recommendation for Director of S S A, and. Got, got a recommendation for Suzanne Hughley, is that right? Hughley is the Parryton Special Education S S A Director. And that is your recommendation, Mr. Morelles?
That is a recommendation from the Superintendent in the S S A.
Okay. All right. This time, I would entertain a motion to approve the hiring of Suzanne Hughley as the Parryton Special Education S S A Director.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Now, are we moving on to discussion of possible action, purchasing and installing flooring at the Precay portable building? Okay.
On this one, guys, according to Purchasing Authority, P H Local, the Superintendent can make decisions under the value of thirty thousand dollars, and that's what we've been doing to most of the projects there. The flooring is gonna be over that amount, so I need your approval to purchase the flooring for the Precay building that we're getting ready for next year.
Okay. We have a bid for thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. How many square feet of this was it, Mr. Cap?
I'm gonna say it's five thousand.
Right around five thousand? Okay. All righty. This is a local bid from Parryton Home Design Center.
Will we accept the bid?
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bid for thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for flooring at the new Precay building. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Well, we need to do a budget amendment on that down the line, or is that just coming out of our capital projects?
It's included in our capital projects.
Yeah, and we had two hundred and fifty or something? Okay. Okay.
And guys, there are other expenses that are, as we're getting that ready, but none of them are over that budget. My guess, I don't know, Allen told things, seven, seventy-eight, five thousand, ninety?
Well, I know the fence is gonna be, since we looked at, we spent on that with around twenty-one, twenty-two, something like that. And then, of course, the ramp systems.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen. Yeah, sixteen. Those are actually the orders, they should be here in the next week.
And then the door?
And then the door was, I think, around forty-five, forty-six hundred dollars, you got the equipment on it.
So it'll be like our other doors with the locks and.
Supposed to have a card reader, electric strike, push button station, the office to build those people in and out. Probably the camera out front, so they can see who's at the door.
Did we look at more than one bid on the fencing?
Yes, I got Brandt O'Quinn and all this.
Okay.
Was it two that? I'm interested in it.
I've heard from other fencing contractors before that they didn't have the opportunity to bid on certain fencing jobs, so. Did we advertise it, or?
I don't think we did.
No, that's the two that normally has come forward and just got named, and I don't mind coming and looking at them.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, all right. Okay.
And then I think there's gonna be another little expense, I wanna say six thousand dollars for warmers, so, because we do gotta have a cafeteria in there and shoot to get every saw according to rules and regulations. I think that was six thousand dollars.
All right. Okay, so we have approved the flooring. Next, discussion and possible action on amendments to District of Innovation Plan. Mr. Morelles?
Yes, first, I wanna thank the board members, I think we had, we had two board members there?
Two.
Two board members there, and they got to hear this whole thing. It's really letting you know a little bit more, I have a decision to make. But Doug had something he wanted to add in here, dealing with depositary banks, and this, this renovation allows us to do that, and it really saves some time of having to redo every year for, every year. How many years is it, Doug, for each?
It precludes the need to do, go out for bids that we would have to do this year, and, well, I think we talked about this at the, to the board before. What we propose is a two-year extension. It will come back to our next board meeting and get y'all to approve that. The bank has already verbally agreed to it already, so. Yeah, it's the going thing now for our. We don't even have to submit these to T E A anymore. I guess, something our arbitrage will check on, but it's, it doesn't seem to be a burning issue for them anymore, so.
Dr. Rock, was there anything else on the District of Innovation?
No, I think it's been captured on one forty-three and one forty-four.
So my recommendation is here.
Okay.
And it was interesting, you know, didn't know where to expect. They tossed us right in the groups and made us see things and write stuff on the. Educators, administrators, to parents, to just city residents, and you get a lot of different opinions on a lot of different subjects. It was, it was very beneficial.
And the second one, they did deny that one, so.
They did.
Bottom one out there, we didn't know for a swat.
Yeah, it's not just a rubber stamp.
Yeah.
There was good discussion, they looked at that and said, noob.
All right. Well, we have a recommendation that the board approve the proposed changes to the District of Innovation as approved by the D E I C Committee. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the changes to the District of Innovation Plan. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Okay. Next, we have discussion of possible action on twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two allotment, antique certification form, which Dr. Rock went over with us earlier in the meeting. Dr. Rock, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay. And what is our recommendation?
Recommend that we approve it.
Okay. This time, I'd entertain a motion to approve the action on the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two allotment antique certification form.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next, we have consideration and possible action on request for additional state aid for add valorum tax credit for the Palladium Wind Project.
Okay, as you can see, guys, here, this is what the T E A sent us, get the ladies in the reams or something like that.
Marine, with Randy McDowell.
With Randy McDowell. Anyway, these are things, I did certify this and sent this back. If you look through your page, is there, I think it's on page eight, the question on that, we're still trying to find a marine to answer that correctly, but I think as soon as we answer eight and you approve this, then, then we're good. But it's all going with taxes, Palladium Wind Authority. And then there's a thing from Mommy and I, Tommy's very bad.
This is, this is sort of a routine deal, we've done this before for years.
All right, so what kind of action are you looking for, just to approve the request?
Yeah. Sign, sign the form at the back.
Yeah. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the request for additional state aid for add valorum tax credit for the Palladium Wind Project. Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries seven zero. If there's nothing else for the good of this meeting, meeting adjourned.